Decide to move forward. So it'd be great if the board wants to. I think many people have shared already where they are. And, you know, the district will, we want to be able to give you a framework of what we're, how we are considering all the things that we needed to take into account. And those preparations and then to come back to the board with a plan to move forward. We all agree that our families certainly need to be able to make plans. And, you know, as often as I hear from families who are ready to return, I hear from families who are not. So it's about even, it's about even split in terms of the emails that, that I receive, so.
Thank you. Any other discussion about the metrics for 100% return? The draft that Dr. Logan has submitted to us for three, two, return to three, two, as well as the non-negotiables? A lot of these are set based on the infection rate in our county. Mrs. Gadding.
So I guess, can you just clarify for us the, I know, so I'll just go back to the Zoo Academy because those folks have reached out to me. What would be the metric for allowing our zoo students to go back to the Zoo Academy or Parrish or some of the other programs that you had listed?
I believe that they are in phase two. Are they in phase two? Phase two?
Yes. No, phase three.
Phase three? Couple of things. One, one of the things that we mentioned earlier was that although they are written as phases, doesn't mean that they, some could occur simultaneously. So it certainly is a goal to get students that are in those experiential kinds of programs. And, I mean, there's lots of different things. There's auto tech. There's all kinds of different experiential programs where kids need to be, the CNA program in terms of career and technical education, many programs that fit the description and where children need to, welding, where children need to have the experiences where they are physically present and so they would all be treated similarly.
So what is phase three? Is that 5%? I guess that's what I'm trying to understand is what, what are the metrics for each phase? Did I miss that?
No. We, on the first, on the slide, if we can get to the slide that has the conditions for return. One of the things, those are metrics for 100% return. One of the things we said was that we are likely not going to meet those criteria. And as a school district, we'll have to make some decisions on whether or not we're going to move forward, realizing that there's an increased risk with those metrics not met. And that's the discussion for the board. To understand where we are in terms of risk tolerance, risk acceptance, and moving forward, weighing the factors of the benefit of in-person learning with some of the risk.
So for phase three, four, and five, which are all the three, two model, how will that discussion with the board take place? I guess I'm just trying to understand.
It's right now. So this is the opportunity for you to discuss it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. As a, as a school board.
Got it. Okay. So I guess, I would think that based on the data that we're seeing at the elementary and middle levels and some of the results we're seeing in the communities around us, it would seem as though that we could bring back our elementary and middle school kids quite quickly, from my perspective, and that we should be also looking at that high school return, you know, maybe shortly after that to see how that's going, how we're doing at the elementary and middle levels for a couple of weeks. That would be my thought. So that we're moving more on a two-week versus so far out.
Ms. Crackey.
What was just said is not really confusing, but in the other big picture, it is confusing. If we talk about elementary, I know, you know, there's some student, some schools are small and their children go off to middle school. So we're talking about elementary is really in an elementary setting, I believe. And so if we are doing that, would they be able to avoid the three, two model and go back? I'm talking in person, alive, sitting in the chair?
So the, in the, in the phase model, we'd bring children back so that we can continue to socially distance at 50%, which is the three, two model. And we would bring our elementary students in first and then followed by our middle school and then followed by our high schools.
The other part of that is, is it the feeling because of the statistics or are they good enough for us to allow an elementary school to open?
Well, the, the, they don't meet the criteria. There's the, the healthcare professionals' criteria. And so that's what we are talking about is that we have to make some determinations based on our level of risk, you know, tolerance and acceptance for other people's children and, and adults that we, that serve those children. And, and, you know, decide that, well, the risk is the risk of the, of students, of spread versus the benefits of being in person. That's, that's the, that's the difficulty. And it's just not straightforward. I mean, I shared at the beginning, it's just, you can't put it in a formula and, and, and come out with something. You, it's a judgment call as it is for superintendents all over the, wherever they are. And, and that's, that's the, that's the issue. There are, there's lots of evidence that, you know, of, of little children being more, less likely to develop severe symptoms and to spread as much. There are, you know, there's, we've, we've had, we've had lots of literature along those lines. It's a little different once children are between 10 and 19. And so those are all the things that as a, as a decision-making body, you all have an opportunity to weigh in, to weigh in on. And it's just, it's just not straightforward, Mrs. Crackey. I wish it were. It just isn't because it is, there are also teachers, there are also paraprofessionals, and there are bus drivers and all of the other people that make our system go. So.
So it sounds like the best we can do at elementary is a three, two? Is that the?
Well, I think that we certainly, it would be where we start and would be an opportunity for us to monitor and how things are going and perhaps be able to bring children back at 100%. Remembering that we will have some number of students who will, may want to remain remote. We don't know what that number would be. That's also a complicating factor. I know Mrs. Coman talked about third order change. And certainly there are families who may decide that they want to continue with remote. When we were opening, when we were going to open with the three, two model, we had about 6,700 young peoples, families indicate that they wanted to have a fully remote model. We don't know what that number would be because we'd have to recalibrate that and ask families, you know, who would like to stay remote. I think that some of the data on there where the, the community spread rate is very high, remembering that our children travel to all schools. So it's not that they stay, everybody doesn't, that just happens to be their domicile. It's not necessarily where they go to school. And so we would have to be looking at, you know, thinking about this for an entire community, not isolated. As I spoke a little earlier, my zip code is at 10.6, at 68154. So that's certainly a consideration for, for me as a resident of 68154, you know? So, so I think that that's something that we will need to weigh. The administration will certainly weigh it and come back with a recommendation for how to move forward. And that's, that's where, that's where we are.
Ms. Cassidy.
Thank you, President Snow. I personally am fine with whatever the metrics are and the criteria. I am not equipped to make those decisions. As Mr. Promen said, they're out of our jurisdiction. I think one thing that I've been really proud of watching our district and all of you folks make decisions is that we've kept our guiding light on health and science and the professionals that have gone to school for a heck of a long time to get the degrees that they have. And they are the experts and I will follow whatever those experts tell us. So whatever the metrics are, I would be fine with. We have had quite a few families, though, that have stated in emails to us and phone calls that we are not transparent and that we have not been able to produce our metrics and our criteria. So I'm wondering if, once this is set in stone and we have discussion here this evening, can that be something that's put out communication-wise by Mr. Maskell and his staff, who I feel have done a tremendous job of being transparent through this entire lovely process we've all been in with COVID-19? Is that something that we can put out there so that folks are well aware of where we are at and what we are using as our guiding light to get our students back in school?
Absolutely, Mrs. Cassidy. Some of those links were included in last week's Health and Safety Newsletter, but tomorrow's opening column in the newsletter is pending this evening's discussion. So that will be shared out there.
Thank you so much.
Dr. Holman.
Thank you, President Snow. I may have missed this in the presentation earlier, but with the, the phase return to three, two, was there a timeframe between each phase mentioned?
No, and not necessarily. I mean, I think that that's something that our team has been looking at. I know that initially, you know, the thoughts to get our students with the most complex needs in first is certainly, then to have some time with them and then move to the next group is certainly something we're thinking at, thinking about a week at a time, perhaps. Seems, seems like that could work, remembering that, you know, the three, two family model is a three, two family model. And so if you have one group in at a time, somebody's at home, right? So I think that that is, that certainly is how we're looking at building, wanting to have the elementary children in first and then looking at the middle and high. And then the next would be to look at a 100% return, if possible, starting with elementary school.
Thank you.
Ms. Snipe.
I was just going to add in regard to communications. The newsletter, I guess my first question is, is that an electronic newsletter? Is that something that's sent through email? Only, I guess?
Absolutely, Ms. Snipe. So that goes out directly to all staff and families each Wednesday, generally around 6:00. Though some recipients may receive it later in the evening.
So that being said, I saw one day on social media something about there being several families whose information may not be updated in our system. So how do, how does the district make sure that that information is updated so that everyone can be receiving communications?
Thank you for the opportunity to highlight that, Ms. Snipe. We rely on our families to share those email addresses with their school community. And so once they share that with our school communities, it is logged in our student database. So the same emails that a teacher has on file to email mom and dad or a family member about the great things that their student did in class that day are the same ones that we pull for district-level communications. So if families have not provided in an email address, we do ask them to submit that to the school community. Also, it's important to note that because of the email systems we use to reach our families in a mass capacity, allow for unsubscribing. Once a family unsubscribes from those lists, they may not be receiving further communications. So for instance, in normal operations, we may hear from a family that says they didn't receive a particular notification about a weather adjustment or something similar. Upon some investigation, we find that they actually unsubscribed from emails from the school district without realizing that would impact their ability to receive messages from us at a macro level going forward. So we're working on our end to provide messages that are relevant and useful for our families. And we ask them to make sure they give their school communities that email address to reach them.
Do we know if all of our families have email addresses outside of the students who I know get OPS email addresses?
That is a conversation that I've been talking with several school leaders about, how we can support families to access email. That's also why we use social media, understanding that some families may not use email but may access us on social media. I will say that based on the volume of information and the frequency with which we communicate, and because sometimes in social media, there are algorithms that affect what a family may see based on who they follow, email is really the most effective tool we have, especially for urgent updates. But we do strive to reach families in a variety of ways. And I do want to mention our appreciation for our bilingual liaisons and student and community services because we really used our data to identify those additional four languages that our families speak beyond English and Spanish. And that's, those are the languages that we are translating into each week audibly, knowing that some families may be able to speak the language but not read it. And so that is why we chose the audible translation to best support our families who speak another language.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith.
You kind of touched on it, but we are on like four or five different social media platforms, correct? But also I get, I get the, as a parent, I get the email. And we also do the robocalls, I guess, is what it is. And you can answer that right then or listen to the message later on is an option. So there's a lot of different things besides just the, the, the email that goes out. I just wanted to allow you the chance to say that, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. That is correct. I will say that we use feedback opportunities to drive our efforts. It's really a strategic communications process that we use to serve the district community. And both before and during the pandemic, our families and staff who answer our surveys rate email as their most preferred option because sometimes, depending on the volume of information that we have to communicate, the message is too long for families to be able to access on their voice recorder or if they're picking up the phone at the grocery store to access the, all of that information. So we do use everything in a complimentary fashion, a layered approach to try and deliver what we are. But I do want to, to mention the way we are trying to deliver information in shorter, more easy-to-remember packages, knowing the volume of information someone referenced that people are receiving right now and the many challenges and pressures that our stakeholders are facing.
Ms. Crackey.
That made me ask this question. What about a snow day? Everybody is going to get up or they're sleeping and you call really early because some of those students have to be out at the bus stop so early. So you, will you still be doing that call? They didn't jump out of bed and go to the computer. So are they going to be able to get that call so that they know to go back to bed?
It depends on our instructional model at the time, Mrs. Crackey, because in the event that we are using our remote learning instructional model, thankfully, or disappointingly, if some of our students are looking for a day off, they'll still be able to access instruction from home. But absolutely, if we're in a three, two model and students are attending, we'll communicate weather adjustments the same way we would before the pandemic.
Mr. Promen.
Thank you. I guess this is for the board officers and Dr. Logan and Mr. Maskell, not to belabor the point, but what do you want from the board to help make this decision for the second quarter and for the second semester? Do you want us to make a recommendation? Do you want to consult with us? Do you want to make the decision and be supported? Where, where do we go from here?
I think that the conversation this evening has been helpful for folks to weigh in, especially on the notion that, as I said at the beginning, is like, we're, we're likely not going to get to those metrics and we also can't stay home forever. And so where, where, how does the board, how does the board view that? We certainly would work with our healthcare professionals and, you know, use a phased-in approach, which is, you know, what we showed tonight. But I think that we, there, there has to be some decision point or probably better stated, some sort of acceptance around how we are, how we're going to, how we move forward. And it's not, that's just not really just straightforward. It's not, okay, well, it gets to, you know, it, it gets to 7% or, you know, let's say it's got 7% because we still have such a range within the district, right? So just for the board to, to weigh in on how they are feeling about that. Ms. Cassidy was very, she, you know, and I think many of you have either verbally or non-verbally kind of talked about where you are. And I think that that's really, that's really all that we are asking this evening. I, the, does a phase approach seem like the right approach? Those kinds of things. How, however you have received what we've talked about this evening, five days of instruction, those kinds of things, are those the right kinds of things to be thinking about based on the feedback you've been getting from your respective constituents? Not, you still, still not there?
No, no, I mean, I agree that that's the approach. I just hope that when you and your team make a decision, that it's not second-guessed. Because we do, we, we can and we do work as a team. You always are communicating with us, asking us how we feel about everything. That's not an issue to me. But if a decision is made and there is a change of heart by some on the board, I mean, the phrase that comes to mind is, that's too bad. I mean, we make decisions in public as a body. And that's how it has to be. And so, again, that's why I called this meeting tonight, because we make decisions in public as a body. And so, you know, I, I want to discuss this as much as possible, not in the quorum, outside of the board meetings like we always do.
Mr. Promen.
But when a decision, I'm not done. When a decision is made, a decision is made, and we need to respect the bounds of who runs our school district because it's set in policy. And, and if a change needs to be made, we can, we can do it the right way in a public meeting as a board.
Second-guessing the superintendent is not something, I mean, this is the reason why we're having this workshop is because there are board members that wanted to have more communication, right? Is that correct? That is because they wanted more information from the superintendent. And that's why we're here. That's not, we didn't call this meeting because people second-guess the superintendent. We called this meeting because three board members wanted a workshop on communication, period. That, that's my understanding of it. Is that everybody else's? I mean, I, because I feel like we're dancing around this conversation that there were people second-guessing the superintendent. Board leadership second-guessing the superintendent.
Sure, we can have that conversation if you'd like to.
No, we can have the conversation, Mr. Promen. But I'm telling you this right now.
Then let's talk about that email that you sent out the day before the 55,000 students were about to return to school, calling an emergency meeting the next day. That's called second-guessing.
That's not second-guessing the superintendent. Superintendent made that comment when she was here, during public com, I mean, during the news hearing that she had, and I was there. Second-guessing the superintendent is calling a workshop and saying, you don't know next steps. You can call the superintendent. You can send an email. You have access just like everybody else. We have to understand, folks, everybody on this board is publicly elected. You have just as much access to the superintendent of Omaha Public Schools as I do. Heck, you probably have more access. Dr. Logan? Any decision you make, I will support. I mean, if that, that's, that's what you want to hear, Mr. Promen. I just said it. Do you have anything else? This workshop adjourned?
I'm with her. Whatever decision she makes, I'm with her.
Dr. Holman.
Dr. Logan, I just have one other question for you. What would be a good time for, prior to the end of first quarter for remote learning? When do you anticipate there being a good time in having the actual plan finalized, if I articulated that correctly?
You did. Well, we really presented a lot of it tonight. It's really adding dates to when this happens. And perhaps refining some of the criteria in terms of decreasing rates and those kinds of things. You know, the issue is, though, that we could do that. And yesterday was Labor Day and 21 days from then is the 28th of September and the conditions could be so different. So we certainly are prepared to do that. You know, I, you know, we do feel that trying to get back to some more in-person learning as appropriate and taking a slow and steady pace and is the path forward. But it's just not going to be an easy path based on what we have right, what we, the conditions that we see right now. And that there, I'm sure that after this meeting, you will hear from a lot of other constituents who have seen that data and will have some very definite thoughts. I know that I've already received about 15 emails, you know, from, from folks who see the data as reasons already, you know, to not return. So that is, is just, it's going to be a part of this as there is not going, there's no, as I like to say, the only way out is through. It's just, it's not, it's always going to be a part of it. And I think that us as a school district, offering different options for families is also the part of the path forward. So folks who are not at that, you know, who's, and, and with no judgment, you know, everybody has to find their way through this. Our job is to support them as best we can by having some options and trying to support families with all the other kinds of things that they have been forced, some forced into needing and will need so that they can hopefully prosper on the other side of this. Could I answer your question, Dr. Holman?
Yes, it does. Thank you. And just, I will also announce publicly that you absolutely have my 100% support. And I believe that you already know this. And I entrust you and have faith in you and the district leadership in making the decisions that are best for our school district. And I will also go ahead and just say that attending Council of Great City Schools meetings every Friday, this is a discussion that we have every single, every single Friday in regards to the purview of the superintendent. And these are decisions that superintendent should and, should be allowed to make and do need to be allowed to make in order to, to, to progress the school district in the best way possible. And some things we just need to stay out of as a board and getting into the weeds, as many people say. And we're not the only school board in the nation that's going through this. This is a discussion across the nation. School districts over 50,000 students, this is, these are the things that are being discussed. And, and we have to be able and we should be able to support our superintendent in the decisions that she and the district leadership makes.
Mrs. Gadding. This is just kind of a follow-up to what Dr. Holman just said. So, and so that I understand better, is the phased approach what happens starting second quarter or is it something that you would implement prior to the start of second quarter? I'm just trying to understand that, you know, is it earlier than that or is it after that?
I think our goal is to have students sitting in seats in the second quarter. And so in a phased approach, you'd have to phase it in and have some time to do that.
Is that throughout the second quarter, then?
I think our goal would be to have every, all levels in the, in the seat by the start of the second.
By the start of second quarter, which would maybe allow for the sports folks in a three, two model to have sports as well?
Mrs. Gadding, I think we are, we are, we have moved towards having, looking for, to have our fall sports in the spring.
Okay.
And I think that it is a And I think that it is a terrible thing for young people, as, as for our, our, I've got to forget, show choir. I met with students in that, for students in debate, National Honor Society, all kinds of children who are missing out on things that they love and that make them want to go to school. And so it's like, again, not something that we take lightly. But we also, we're going to always have those metrics up there, too, right? So we're, when we're thinking about making these decisions, those, and we've said, we're not going to meet that, right? And how we balance our priorities of getting children back in school.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Cassidy.
Thank you. So I just want to say before we end this meeting tonight, that we are all filled with a lot of pressure and tension. And you can obviously all see that this evening. We've all been under quite a bit since March, since this has been going on, and COVID has been just hanging around. And we've all been doing our best to deal with it and to continue the main goal, which is to provide the best education for every student every day. So I just want this board to continue to work together and try to keep our differences and our opinions where they need to be. I think we've worked really well for quite a while, and I do not want this pandemic to change that with our board. I think we all support Dr. Logan and we all have different districts that we represent, but we all need to keep our eye on the ball that we represent 54,000 students across our district and not just our own constituents. We have to keep that in mind with every decision that we make and every decision that we support our district in. I will say, the one thing that I support is I think we should have a virtual snow day. I vote for that right now. Mrs. Crackey, thank you so much. I think we should have a snow day.
It is, what time is it? It's 9:50. Is that 50 over there? Is that clock's 10:10? 9:58? Dr. Holman, we're going, we're not doing closed session. We're going to adjourn.
Okay.
Entertained a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
This is a motion by Dr. Holman, second by Mr. Smith to adjourn the meeting. Mr. Ray, roll call, please.
Snow.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Gotti.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Sorry. Crackey? Pearlman? Ryan?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Snipe?
Aye.
Snipe.
That was so fun.